All right, good afternoon. Welcome to our July 7th City Council Work Session. If I could have the City Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Kristofferson.
Here.
Gregert.
Here.
Klinkhammer.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Wirthman.
Here.
Jean.
All right, thank you. I will welcome City Manager Peters to the podium. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Councilmember Weld. And as we're experiencing here, COVID is certainly making everything a little more challenging. So, a work session in the world of COVID, so we'll do the best we can. We've had a few technical challenges with this, but welcome to all the council members and welcome to other people who are online and watching this work session of the Eau Claire City Council as we really talk about some very, very important issues. And perhaps to frame that a little bit, I just wanted to say a couple of things. First off, that the killing of George Floyd, you know, it happened because of an overabundance of callousness, a lack of value of human life and dignity, and a lack of culture that holds everyone accountable to the highest standards of conduct and decency. It also happened because there was structural inequities and racism. Now, Eau Claire has not experienced the depth of division or tragedies that are found in other communities, and we have an excellent police department that actively engages with the community they serve to earn their trust and their respect. But this does not mean that we have done things perfectly, or that we don't have problems, or that there's not work to be done. There is work to be done as we go forward building. And it's important that Eau Claire, as a community, not ignore what's going on around us and what happens here in Eau Claire. We need to self-reflect, examine, learn, and be willing to grow. We need to value and leverage our strengths of collaboration, cooperation, and respect into appropriate actions that move us forward in real, meaningful ways. Now, it might seem a little odd that your city manager wants to talk about happiness, love, and fulfillment and opportunity in our lives, but I think it's really important because in order to have happiness, love, fulfillment, and opportunity alive in our lives, we must have trust. Trust, not fear, must surround us and be every, and part of every aspect of our lives. Trust in our homes, in our neighborhoods, in our institutions, in our government, and of course, our local police department. Trust that's built on transparency, acting with integrity, competency, and accountability, taking responsibility for one's own actions. Building this trust for every interaction with everyone in our community should be our goal. Now, like all of you and many others, I've spent the last few weeks listening. Listening to community leaders, listening to advocates, and other voices while exploring various models for a successful path forward. Tonight is a council work session, and it's an opportunity for you to weigh in and discuss issues concerning local policing and related matters. So, the structure of the work session is that, this is a reminder for everybody, it's a mechanism for staff to receive input and feedback from the whole council. Staff will provide some limited background on a topic, followed by discussion and direction from the city council. And that direction is general and broad with input, and that's expected and anticipated. Giving general direction, just so you're reminded, doesn't bind you as individual council members. So, this is a conversation. It's a conversation between staff and the council. There's no votes that are taken. The work sessions, of course, are open to the public, and there's no public permit or public input as this is a conversation of the council. And I am confident that as we go through this conversation, there's going to be talk about public input and what that should look like and how we work with that going forward. The agenda or the topics that we have on for tonight, there are five. And the first is really a review of our local efforts to address questions and concerns related to local law enforcement, some of our staffing and procedures and transparency issues. The second topic we're going to talk about tonight is a discussion around the concept of a regional or Eau Claire Task Force to address not only law enforcement, but other practices and engagements in the community. Third, the status or role of a citizen oversight in law enforcement operations. Fourth, just an update on where we're at with the body worn cameras. And fifth, some interest in support for a dedicated personnel through including, that works on diversity and inclusion. So, we start tonight from an excellent position, but there's work to be done and improvements that can be made. We need to find ways to constructively harness the energy that's in the community right now. This is something we want to get right. We're recognizing that our path forward with this issue and these issues is not going to be perfect. I'm looking forward to the conversation tonight as we all lean in, learn, and engage in the topics before us. So, we'll start out with the first topic, which is a overview of the local efforts to address questions and concerns related to local law enforcement, staffing, policies, procedures, and transparency. And I will turn it over to Chief Rokus, who will have a brief presentation, and then we'll be opening it up for the council conversation and discussion, and then we'll move on from topic to topic with that. So that we'll take each one, one at a time, presentation, discussion, and conversation in any direction, and then we'll move on to the next one. And we're hopeful to, that this would be probably no more than an hour and a half, just to be respectful of people's time this evening. So, thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Chief Rokus.
Welcome, Chief Rokus.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Peters. Thank you, Council President Weld. To all the members of the Eau Claire City Council and the members of the community that are here this afternoon listening, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak on these important issues. As Mr. Peters said, the brutal killing of George Floyd served as a painful reminder of the racism, inequity, and failures of many of our institutions. Mr. Floyd's death, like many others before, further increased the mistrust of the police and of the institutions of our criminal justice system. The same institutions that are supposed to be promoting peace and freedom, as well as protection of ineligible rights. Functions like these cannot be achieved without change, nor can they be achieved without intentional effort aimed at strengthening trust. Efforts towards change cannot be successful if only undertaken by the police or our other community institutions. The community we serve must be engaged, our community members of color, and other marginalized groups must have a voice if we are to collectively achieve our goal of being a just society. Trust is the foundation of being an effective and legitimate police organization. Our department's vision statement highlights this, as well provides practical guidance on who we want to be as a police organization. It provides an emphasis on community involvement and partnership. And the statement not only defines our goals, but also defines our success as a police department and hopefully feeds into our goals as a community. Our values as a department describe how we're going to achieve these goals. It shapes our organizational culture and reflects what is important to the men and women of the Eau Claire Police Department. Our vision and our values set the backdrop for how we approach policing in our community. Our approach to policing has been outlined in the recent commitment to our community written by City Manager Peters and I. And that commitment is divided into four pillars. These are our four pillars of policing in Eau Claire. These are the policing practices we have already prioritized and are engaged in. And also, these four pillars outline our commitment to continual improvements with community involvement that we are committed towards working towards. The first pillar of our policing philosophy is we employ, we employ community policing strategies that prioritize partnerships and problem solving to address the conditions that impact safety. We are not a paramilitary organization. We are not an occupying force. The tools we utilize extend beyond the criminal justice system. We view the officer's role as a community partner and as a guardian of peace and freedom. Institutionalizing this culture is accomplished in a variety of ways. It starts with who we hire. We utilize extensive and thorough hiring practices, ensure we hire officers with high ethical standards, and the preferred skills being communication and problem solving, not tactical aptitude nor procedural knowledge. I would rather leave a position unfilled in the department than compromise and select someone who does not have the right public service mindset. The hiring, promotion, and discipline process is overseen by the Eau Claire Police and Fire Commission, our civilian oversight board. The officers we hire first need to be vetted. Our process involves interviews, written testing, and extensive background investigation, psychological testing, and a pre-employment polygraph examination. Once hired, the approach to policing is through community policing, where it's part of every officer's responsibility. It is not the job of a small unit or a group of officers. Every patrol officer and many of our detectives are assigned to a neighborhood or a geographic area of the city. This is done so we can build relationships and to better serve. We approach policing as a civilian function, where we minimize and closely regulate the use of certain police equipment. Our philosophy, put into practice through community policing strategies, has been effective. Eau Claire's crime rate is stable. In comparison to similar-sized Wisconsin cities, we rate very well. And we've accomplished this in a very modest manner. In comparison to 20 comparable Wisconsin cities, our per capita police spending is one of the lowest. In comparison to these similar-sized Wisconsin cities, our total number of police officers per 1,000 residents is the lowest in the state. We are even lower when compared to the national average. We have a small police department that is effective because of the work we do to co-produce public safety with others. Our second pillar is training and education. The police department prioritizes training topics such as bias, fair and impartial policing practices, and de-escalation strategies. Each officer receives training in these areas beyond state-of-Wisconsin mandates as part of our continuing education requirements. Our de-escalation program has been recognized at the state level and is considered a core competency required of all of our officers. We are continuing to focus on these important areas that are not often considered traditional police training. We are currently in the process of expanding de-escalation training by adding crisis intervention training to the quarterly or regular training education in both classroom and scenario-based training exercises. If tuned into local current events this morning, community members saw an example of the effectiveness of our de-escalation strategies. Additional steps are being undertaken to improve cultural competency, training through a partnership to the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusivity. We are developing additional training on bias, cultural competencies, and anti-racism. Our third pillar is policy and oversight. In order to ensure proper accountability, it's imperative to have strong policies and strong oversight of those policies. The Eau Claire Police Department utilizes policies and procedures developed by nationally-recognized experts through LexiPaul. Our LexiPaul policy system provides model policies on contemporary issues in policing. Our policies are updated twice every year to make certain they remain current. Our policy management system also ensures officers are familiar with each policy. The system tracks if and when officers have reviewed a new policy or updated, or an updated policy. Officers then must complete written tests each month to confirm practical familiarity. Finally, the system has a quality insurance component, confirming new policies are reviewed, the monthly testing is completed, and we can apply those policies to real-life practical situations. Community members have expressed a number of concerns with police practices and policies in recent weeks. These concerns are well-grounded, and they are formed by personal experience or what we have seen occurring throughout our country. These concerns and our corresponding policies include an Eau Claire Police Department requirement for officers to intervene when witnessing excessive force or other forms of misconduct. We prohibit the use of chokeholds. We prioritize de-escalation. We utilize a use-of-force continuum when dealing with escalated situations that mandates the minimum use of force be used. We require consideration of all other options before deadly force is employed. When practical, a warning is required before employing any level of force. And we have mandates that recording and documentation technology is used properly. And we require reporting and documentation of all uses of force. Our work developing these policies and new policies and refining existing ones and listening to feedback on them will be continual. Our fourth pillar is transparency. We must be as open with the public as possible, consistent with victim rights and our other legal requirements. Transparency strengthens trust, that ever-important prerequisite for our legitimacy as a police organization. We have made improvements to our transparency. I'll talk a little bit more about those shortly, but there are new areas we can pursue in addition, including better access and sharing of data, specifically racial demographic data, so we can develop evidence-based strategies and measure our outcomes. In recent weeks, within these four pillars, we've made significant progress. We have implemented over 20 improvements to the Eau Claire Police Department since May 25th. Updates include changes to existing policies, as well as the addition of new policies. We further prioritize de-escalation strategies by adding crisis intervention training to regular use of force training. We have reinforced our already duty-to-intervene policy by incorporating this concept into scenario-based training exercises. We're working towards strengthening trust by improving pathways of communication, by meeting with community, community members and representatives of community groups to discuss these issues, and most importantly, listen. We've promoted transparency through the use of our website. Links have been added, enabling an aggrieved community member to have an easy avenue to make a citizen complaint, provide input, or compliment a department member. And finally, adding a transparency and policing tab to our website, where information is provided on frequently expressed community concerns on our policies, practices, oversight, and budget. My description of these best practices is not meant to say we are perfect, and there is no room for improvement. There is room for improvement, and we will get better. Our next steps need to prioritize collaboration and community involvement. I look forward to further listening to and learning from others as we strive as a community towards continual improvement, safety, and justice for all. On behalf of our officers and not all of the employees of the Eau Claire Police Department, it is an honor to serve everyone who lives and works in Eau Claire. Each day, we strive to the best of our ability to serve and protect others, oftentimes at great risk to personal safety. To do this successfully, we need to continually earn the trust and confidence of our fellow community members. You have our full commitment not only to maintain, but also to strengthen that trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Rokus. And City Manager Peters. Other questions from council or comments? Councilmember Kristofferson.
Thank you, Council President. I am so proud of where we are compared to what I see in other communities. I'm interested, if you could just give us a broad brush stroke of some of the individuals that have contacted you and with whom you have had conversations that are beginning to move this community involvement process along.
Okay. There's been outreach from, I guess, kind of a number of different levels. Obviously, community members through city council have reached out, done our very best to respond or reply or provide input or feedback to each one of those inquiries, and also have had individual community members reach out directly to members of the department with questions, with concerns, also wanting to know how to help. And so, those have been facilitated either through email exchanges, in-person meetings in public outdoor spaces, and then through lengthy telephone conversations. The outreach from individual groups, I would say, has been probably limited. It's been more, from my perspective, it's been more concerned community members, just with questions about practices and looking for ways to offer support to moving the community
Any other questions or comments for Chief Rokus in regards to Agenda Item Number One? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. This is a big question, so I'm just wondering, I don't know if this is where it is, but I'm just wondering, people are talking about adding mental health, and actually, the former chief, I know in a work session, I think we were talking about strategic goals, he talked about adding social workers. So, I know that idea's been floating around for a while. So, I'm wondering if you could talk about that, or maybe that would, I'm just curious if your thoughts on that.
Yes, it is something that we're looking into. We've been looking into it for a number of years. There's a number of different models for that. You know, it's most notably, I guess, characterized as a co-responder program, where you have a co-response program for when we have mental health crisis or concerns. Officers respond with social workers, whether they be affiliated with a county human services department, they can come from the private, private sector, nonprofit sector as well. And so, we've looked at that, different models being adding staff to do that. Right now, I'm looking at ways to do that, either through existing staff, through members of the department, other service providers. It, we need, it's something that I think we're very interested in moving towards as a community, and I am as a department as well. We, you know, you know, we take a lot of pride in our ability to do that, but we're not trained mental health experts. And there are other avenues that are more, that are better equipped to that. We have a role in that, obviously, in certain situations to ensure safety of those scenes, of those situations. There's statutory authority that police officers have that counselors and social workers do not have, depending on what type of crisis we have. And so, in order to shift towards that, we, you know, I would prefer to have a model that we know works, that's been proven in other communities. And so, I believe the next steps are researching that. So, if, if we do that shifting and sharing of those responsibilities, we have something in place that we know works, has been proven effective, hopefully as evidence-based, and move towards that. Depending on the model, whether that's social workers embedded in the law enforcement center, we do have the benefit of a combined city-county law enforcement center. The city police department and the county sheriff's department are separate agencies, but we're co-located in the same building as the Department of Human Services and many other, many other organizations. So, we've got, we do have an opportunity there just based on geography. It's which model is best to move forward with, and that requires study.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jean.
Hi, thank you. 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 Hi, thank you.
our primary partner is the Eau Claire County Department of Human Services. So they contract on a, I don't know how often the contract comes up, but they contract with a service called Northwest Connections to provide support for our officers when they're dealing with someone in mental health crisis. That support can come in a variety of forms. Most typically, it is through a telephone referral. So when our officer is dealing with that situation and that person in crisis, we'll call the Northwest Connections line, and talk, talk to a care worker, provide a summary of the situation or a scenario that we're dealing with, and will, and then we will hand the phone to the person in crisis. And so that worker can be in direct contact with that person. In some situations, the, the mobile worker may respond to the scene, and work with the officer with an outcome, on the outcome, whether that's a safety plan, whether that's a voluntary placement in some situation, or if there are no other options, the office, and, and the situation rises to the high enough level, the officer can do what's called a Chapter 51 emergency commitment, that's done in consultation with Northwest Connections, the county contracted referral service. So those are, those are kind of our, our procedures and practices, and through supervisory oversight, that's how we make sure that that happens. In domestic abuse situations, we have what's called a lethality assessment tool and program that we do in partnership with Bolton Refuge House. When we respond to an issue, instance of domestic violence, we get that victim. We do an assessment, which is kind of a questionnaire based on risk factors, and then we will try to connect that person with a domestic abuse or domestic violence advocate. And then there can be a number of response mechanisms through that. And then we also have supervisory oversight to make sure that those connections and referrals are made. Councilmember Jean, does that adequately address tho, that question, or those questions?
That did, that did. And however, I do have a quick follow-up with that.
Sure.
You know, when we do those assessments, I'm, I'm assuming each organization would do an internal annual assessment on their department. And then, of course, if you do have audits or whatnot, is there, how can the community be part of an assessment, quality, quality assessment, annual quality assessment? Is, is there any possibility to having, you know, input from the community when it comes to having these, you know, just doing, if you would, a community assessment on, you know, the community building aspect of the P D, and doing these?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I think that's an opportunity. It's something, that's a question I have not thought about. I think it makes sense, and, and there, I think there can be a way that we would do that, we can do that. I think it also would need to be in cooperation with our partners, who provide some of the services, and maybe have a little bit better connection on how to get that feedback, and ensure that quality assurance. But that's not something that we're, we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Chief Rokas and Mr. Peters. Yeah, just kind of wanted to build off of some of the discussion from Councilmember Bergy and Councilmember Jean about the importance of the social work profession to the work that needs to be done to, to help our community. Obviously, we, you know, I've been hearing great things about, you know, having a social worker in the library, you know, helping people with a wide variety of, of needs. And I guess, you know, what comes to mind, you know, as someone who serves on the, the city's transit commission, and who's a transit rider, I think about our new bus transit center, of the new facility that will have some, will be a, a new space downtown of a lot of touchpoints with, with the public. And so one thought I had, and maybe you've thought about this too, you know, what are some of the other places within the city operations that it would be good to, you know, prioritize outside the staffing, you know, that could, you know, help meet people where they're already going, and, and maybe do some more preventative work to help them with resources, whether that be transportation or mobility, as may be quite relevant at the transit center, or housing, or, you know, other basic needs that allow people to have a more stable life. And, you know, right now, we have, you know, a private security firm that is hired to do some very minimal security down at the transit center. We, I think we should think about doing something different down there, especially with the opportunity that this new facility brings. So, just kind of wanted to throw that out there for you. I've only emailed it a little bit with some, some other staff related to transit, but I'm not sure if anything comes to mind with regard to, you know, the experience we've had at the library and having a social worker there, if there's other opportunities you see coming up, that maybe is related to the police department, but also maybe not as related.
Sure. And I think there's, from the models that I've seen and read about, and what's been done in other communities, there's, there's, there's two, I would say there's two needs. We have crisis response, where we have someone in a mental health crisis, where we need to have a response and try to get that person, that crisis stabilized, secured, and enable proper, proper services to be delivered or be, be provided. And that's the typical situation that we are most, most involved in. The challenge with that one is it's kind, it's reactionary, and we're waiting for a crisis to occur. There's a lot of different areas in our community, where geographic areas, where we could define there being need. The models that I have seen that have been effective are outreach teams. And oftentimes, those outreach teams are done as a consortium, whether it be, it's usually a police officer, social work, other service organizations, who can go out into the community where the need is, and based on whether it be institutional knowledge from those organizations, or whether it be doing follow-ups to referrals that come in through the variety of mechanisms, where we go out into the community, whether it be the transit center, the library could be a possibility. We have a place where members of our community who are struggling with experiencing homelessness, or meant untreated mental health issues, or addiction, go out and try to do that outreach, and get those individuals connected with services. I would describe that as being, as being more prevention-based, and getting people connected with services ahead of time, to, to try to preclude those crisis situations that oftentimes we find ourselves responding to, where it's maybe a little bit too late. Councilmember Bergy's remarks as far, are kind of pointing back to some previous work by Chief Staniszewski, was focused on that outreach team concept. And so we've got a couple of different needs, that co-responder, but then I think also a little bit more of a forward lean, is that outreach team concept as well. And that, that kind of covers the different geographic locations, because we can go to where the community, we can go to where the need is in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McGregor. Any other discussion or questions in regards to Agenda Item Number One? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. Just a follow-up on the mental health. I just want to, so, I think most people know I'm, I'm a mental health counselor, L P C, but I, I started my practice and council work, working in the E R with many police officers, actually, that would bring in people. So I would help with the Chapter 51 process, and it was pre-Northwest Connections days, though I used, I worked with that group as well later on. But I, I know some people with this whole discussion of, you know, taking, reallocating funds from the police department, and, and there might be, and putting it towards other things, which is a whole nother discussion. But I do want to say that there is a need for police officers in those crisis situations, even if it is mental health. When I was in grad school, I remember my professor telling us that there's a thin line between someone that's suicidal and someone that's homicidal. You know, if someone's really intent on killing themselves, and if you're in, around that, you might get unfortunately swept up in that. I have seen that, actually, in my work, too. So I know that's a thing. So I just want to say that there is a real need to have that added protection. Me, as a counselor, if there was a crisis situation, to be honest, I probably, not knowing, and I know that's what the police officers face, too, not knowing what you're going into is a scary part. And if there's drugs and alcohol involved, and if they're suicidal, if there's guns at home, I would be very hesitant to go to someone's home. So I just want to say that there is a need for police officers and to have that. And in the E R, too, we are, there's always a security person there, and there are many times I was thankful that that security person was there. So there is that co-responder, I think the co-part is important. So I just wanted to say that. And thank you for your work, for all that. I know that's very dangerous, that domestic and that suicide calls are, are very dangerous. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, and thank everyone for this discussion and these presentations. I hope that we're able to continue to have conversations about these topics, because I think that this is kind of the work of a lifetime, and we need to think about different, you know, additional formats to continue to keep this conversation going, and draw in additional people into the community. I wanted to just touch on one issue that I'm kind of curious about. You know, thinking of, you know, the many different types of, of calls that police do get and deal with, one of the things that I've, I've heard is that sometimes, emergency response results from a call that has something to do with social isolation, whether it's, you know, whether it's an EMS call, because someone is ill but doesn't have a ride to the hospital, or whether it's, you know, someone whose mental health is exacerbated by isolation. And I'm just wondering, you know, in any of these kind of co-responder programs that have been kind of looked at, if there is any component or emphasis on how to organize neighbors or community groups to support each other, so that situations do not become, rise to the level where, you know, further intervention is needed?
Yes, this is Matt Rokas speaking again. I have not come across that as a concern or a strategy within that. I think that's probably a very good point. I mean, we talk quite a bit about having ownership and community involvement and engagement in our neighborhoods, and that, that's a concept that makes sense. But that's not, something that I've come across, and how, you know, the steps that I've taken to educate myself, and as our departments looked at these different response options.
Thank you. Just wanted to contribute to the conversation, and I hope that, you know, going forward, we can all be thinking about, in a broad and visionary sense, about what it means to be a safe community, and what our responsibilities are. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you so much, Council President Weld. And good afternoon to our city staff, our citizens, and to my esteemed colleagues. I want to just list up a couple of things. I do have some comments and questions for a little later on in the agenda. One of the requests that I would have is, in our efforts for transparency, I'm wondering if I can just make a request of staff to make sure that all the documents that council is receiving for this meeting, that they would be available on our city website, so that members of the public who are interested in this very important topic would have the same information that council members have. The second question that I have, or the second item to address is around the legal opinion that our city attorney rendered to the council, which I think would also be a good document for the public to be able to see. And, of course, we do not have a mayor or a system, we have a common council system. And I'm wondering if there can be some examples given, where council could understand, maybe some scenarios in which they could make some policy changes. As I read the opinion, it seems that it's a little heavy on the power of the purse, so to speak. And, of course, there are non-fiscal policies that could be made. I'm not saying that policies do not have fiscal impact, however, there are things that can be addressed and looked at outside of the budgetary process. So, it doesn't have to be today, but I would certainly make that request, to help council and the public understand how to operate with one another in our form of government that we have, and some of the examples of how changes would be.
Thank you. City Manager Peters has a.
Yes, Vice President Emanuel, we'll, we'll dive, we'll take a little deeper dive into that with the third topic of the work session tonight. So we, we'll be able to unpack some of that yet tonight for you.
Any other discussion or questions in regards to Agenda Item Number One? Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld. You know, we haven't talked a lot about the funding piece here, but I understand that this Agenda Item One mentions funding, so I thought I would speak to it here. At the Plan Commission meeting on, on June 15th, I serve on the Plan Commission, and we, you know, reviewed the Capital Improvement Plan, the C I P. And, you know, that document will be coming to the full city council for another work session next week, but then also for public hearing on the 27th, and a vote on the 28th. One of the things that was included, and I know that an email was forwarded to the whole council today about it, too, but this idea that was proposed at Plan Commission as an amendment, you know, to, to make sure that we have direct engagement with Black and Brown community leaders about the Capital Improvement Plan, and what recommendations may come from that discussion with regard to budget priorities. Obviously, we'll also have the operating budget coming up in the coming months, too. But, you know, I think, you know, I have an interest as a council member in, in making sure that we have meaningful input, maybe beyond that public hearing the night before the vote. So I guess, just, just wanted to mention that as an interest, and, and if there's any, there, there could be a variety of ways to, to make sure that, that we're getting that input. I just feel like, you know, the last month and a half, you know, a lot of us have been in listening mode, and, and have to learn a lot more. And we just want to make that easier for everyone to continue that process. So, maybe more of a comment at this juncture, but, but if there's any thought to how we can make sure, you know, we're doing our due diligence on the C I P in the, in the coming weeks, just wanted to mention that here.
City Manager Peters.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember McGregor. That's a really good comment and, and a good question. Just from a, as I noted in that email, from a lane perspective, there's kind of some boundary issues that, that were brought up in terms of the Plan Commission's role. And, you know, a board or commissions, you know, shouldn't be directing staff, or another board, or another commission, or the council, you know, in, in, you know, in directives, in what they need to do or not to. Setting that aside, that, from the, to the topic at hand, which is transparency with the, with the C I P and the budget process, and collecting and getting as much feedback as we can, there's, there's a couple of ways to, to, I think, address the, the, the input that, that I guess is there. One is, when we, when we talk about the, the next Agenda Item, which is the concept of a regional task force, there's, there's tremendous conversation going on right now with many people in the community, with certain emphasis of, with some marginalized communities, and trying to get concepts and ideas on where to go with this, from a, from a task force perspective, and kind of next steps. And certainly, you know, having some, you know, some C I P touchpoints with those individual conversations is, is one point. Another point would be, we do have at the, at the next council meeting, the, the public comment period, and certainly to the extent that anybody who's, who's been looking at, or the, you know, the materials that are out there, including the C I P materials related to policing, would be able to comment on that. And certainly, out of this conversation tonight, if it's the, if it's the pleasure of the council, we could do a, a special, I guess you'd call it, you know, a public hearing, do the public hearing twice. We could do a special meeting on the 21st. So you could have your work session next week on the, on the, on the, on the C I P. Then we could have a special meeting the week after that, on Monday night. And it would just simply be the public hearing for the, for the C I P. And then on the 27th would be the, another public hearing on the C I P, and then, of course, your adoption of it on Tuesday. So those, those would be, I think, a couple of avenues, or pathways to, to address the. So those would be, I think, a couple of avenues or pathways to address the, you know, the issue that was raised with the Plan Commission. Recognizing, at least from our perspective, we're hopeful to be putting time and energy into conversations that are much bigger and broader than the CIT in terms of how we better connect with communities that perhaps haven't been as well-connected to the city or communities that have felt marginalized or have mistrust of the city.
Thank you. City Manager Peters? Councilmember Beaton?
Yes, thank you. First, I wanted to say thanks to the folks from the community who are joining us today and it's, I think it's been said before, but to raise the fact that this is just the very first conversation that council is able to have legally together and that our work is only starting here, it's not ending here, and hope we can certainly see a really robust community engagement process following this meeting. Also, I wanted to say thanks to the Chief Rokas and to city staff for putting this information together. I think one thing that I've learned in the last few weeks is that even as a city council member, I, there's just so much that I don't know about the police department and I think that that really tells me that there's much to learn within the community too. And so I really appreciate the effort by the police department and the city staff to help put together a lot of this information to educate council and also the community. I had a question about, about the process of setting policy. I've heard yet today a couple of people ask questions about this, but I haven't heard a clear answer. And I wanted to point to specifically a section in City Attorney Nick's memo under the section Chief of Police. About halfway down the paragraph, it says, "The authority, as one would expect, is not unbounded and includes an express qualifier that the chief shall obey all lawful written orders of the mayor or city manager or a common council." And I'm wondering if this line can be clarified? And to me, it reads that, you know, that policy that the chief, that the chief of police would execute within the department could be set by either the manager or city council. And I think that we've heard a little bit of conflicting information about that. And I just, I just want to, I just ask because I want to be clear about how policy is set within the department.
Okay. Councilmember Beaton, would it be okay if we had that discussion in Item Number Three? I think the staff is prepared to present some of those questions or answers.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Was there any other questions that you had in regards to Agenda Item Number One?
Not for me?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. This may actually come up in Item Number Two, but I'm wondering about our city's police force and the way we, the relationships that we have with other regional forces, the Sheriff's Department, UWEC. How are we involving them at this level of this conversation? Chief Rokas?
I've had individual conversations with some of the leaders of our law enforcement partners in the region, just kind of talking about the broader issues. There has not been, there has not yet been a formal invitation yet as far as the broader community or regional conversation. I think right now we're at the stage of kind of getting that community input on that and have it take shape from that form. I think there's a place for, you know, for all of us to be at the table when it comes to this, comes to this discussion, listening from community members and moving forward. Someone can drive 20 minutes in our immediate region and drive through six or seven different police jurisdictions. And so I think as we try to make, create that welcoming community that City Manager Peters referenced, looking at that through the lens of the Chippewa Valley, I think would be healthy. I think it would be worthwhile and meaningful. To specify your question, that there's been some preliminary discussions, but not in depth yet.
Okay.
So waiting for direction on that.
All right, thank you. I want to make a comment and it may, it may be more appropriate in Number Two, but again, we've already talked about mental health and how, within the limits that we have of funding. But how do, how do you see our communal mental health resources participating? Do, are they partners at this point? Chief Rokas?
Yeah, I mean, our primary partners that we work with frequently would be Oakley County Department of Human Services, the Contract Northwest Connections, and then our healthcare providers. So we work with them frequently in learning more about other communities. You know, there's some, I think there's some growth areas for us, quite frankly, to work more together. And then also recognizing that the service, the service, the primary service, way service is delivered is kind of during day, weekday daytime hours, and that is not always when the demand is. And, but that is also, many times, that's when the police are there. And so, so I think that's kind of a growth area for us as a community.
Thank you.
Okay, if everyone's had an opportunity for Agenda Item Number One, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item Number Two. City Manager Peters?
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Two is just an update and discussion on efforts to form a regional task force and to address issues not only of law enforcement perhaps, but some conversation and feedback about making that a broader conversation. So in terms of the history, you know, as a community, we've, we've been here before, but not at the same intensity of, I think, conversation, quite frankly, and perhaps commitment. There's been various task forces and study groups that have been put together over the last 30 years. And one of the takeaways when you look back at that history is really, I think, as we look at how to go forward and what to do with this, is to make sure that whatever we do going forward here has to have really strong community support, it has to be actionable, and it has to be doable. And as we've thought about where to go with this, I've had a lot of conversations with different partners and different organizations and different individuals in the community. We have two, actually three fairly recent examples of a format that many of us would like to propose going forward. And if you, if you think back to a couple of years ago, when there was conversation in the community around public intoxication, and we had a process for listening and for hearing and building consensus around the public intoxication ordinance. And then more recently than that, the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force was a, was a process that was put together by the community that has really resulted in some remarkable work that is applicable to many different sectors of the community, not, you know, just us as a city of Eau Claire. And then more, more very recently was the Economic Recovery Task Force that was put together to help the business community and the entire community recover from the, you know, the COVID crisis that we're going through. And one of the key elements of all three of those is really that they weren't owned by or run by any one entity or organization. They were structured in such a way that they were community-owned and community-run and have come up with some, you know, some really good ideas and some good energy depending on what that topic was. As I've been talking about this concept, so it started out with, the idea was, you know, what do we need to do with our own police department in terms of taking where we're at, taking a good, honest assessment of that and trying to figure out where we should go next? That generated a conversation to, well, maybe we should be talking more regionally. As Chief just mentioned, you can drive 20 minutes and be within six different jurisdictions. And quite frankly, an individual that's stopped by somebody in law enforcement, they, they don't really necessarily identify whether it's a City of Eau Claire officer or an Altoona officer or campus officer or the State Patrol or the sheriff or, I mean, so, you know, we might be better off really looking at what, what are the standards and the expectations that we want for the region? And every department is at a different place and a different time, but if we could build consensus as a region for what we need and what we want from our law enforcement, then, you know, perhaps that work of that task force or that group or whatever we call it can then be, you know, a work with all the departments in the area, not just, you know, one department. So that, again, as you're driving through, you have an experience with law enforcement that's very similar regardless of which department that you encounter. That then grew into, you know, this issue's bigger and more than simply law enforcement, right? There are, if we really want people to be welcomed in this community, if we want people to have a positive uplifting experience with all of the institutions in the community as a whole, this is more than just law enforcement. So how do you, how do you wrestle with that? That's a really big issue. And so we've got some different ideas and I want to just run some things by you for at least some feedback as we're having other conversations. I can tell you that the concept of a, of a task force on diversity and inclusion that is more than just the City of Eau Claire is strongly supported by the administration here at the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire County, the administration at the City of Altoona, UW Eau Claire, and the Chamber. So I've been talking with all of those individuals as well as many other community leaders as we're trying to, you know, formulate what this, what this might look like. And many of those folks actually are on this call today. So I know they just caller one, caller two, but just know that people from a wide variety of institutions in the community are interested in how we could put this together to really move the community forward, and they are listening in today. So as we looked at this, possibly, again, for ideas, the different sectors that we might want to be focusing on, again, are broader than just public safety, but we have education as a whole sector, perhaps the human and social services, healthcare, right? People interact with the healthcare system and what is the experience that they have and are there structural issues that could be addressed within healthcare? You have employment across all sectors. You have the retail and personal services. So when people are going into retail stores or other personal services, how, you know, what is that experience? You have the faith community and then government. So at least in concept with the, with the folks that we've been talking to, these are the sectors that we are starting to settle on, might need just as deep a dive as we would like to do with law enforcement based upon, you know, the conversations that would be happening. We should be looking at these other sectors as well for possible improvements and best practices and best standards to make Eau Claire a truly welcoming community for all. So the conceptual framework, kind of the tenants of what this thing would look like is that it would need to be community-owned and community-led, that it would be very intentional with listening and gathering information. There's, I mean, I think it's important and I've heard from many people that whatever we set up, it needs to have a very clear and intentional time for listening and for gathering information. The structure needs to have, there needs to be enough structure that it can actually produce some results at the end, but it also has to be flexible enough that it can be creative and go where ideas need to go. And that it should have absolutely full community representation. It needs to produce actionable results. And I think very importantly, it has to have built-in community leadership commitment to whatever comes out of it in all these various sectors. So big lift, but those are some of the concepts that we're thinking about with this, this regional or area-type task force. Just also to share a little bit more, some of the possible goals that have been tossed out are pretty big and bold and, and I guess, I don't want to say, they're just big and bold, but there are people in this community that would really like us to take on, and I agree that we should, we should take this moment, take this energy and use it to make Eau Claire a better community. So one of the possible goals might be that we want nothing less than to create together an anti-racist community, or we want to lead the nation in becoming the most inclusive and affirmative community for all people, or perhaps it's to transform how we live, grow, and thrive together. Another goal that's been tossed out would be to become the most welcoming mid-sized community in the Midwest for all, or to create an improved community for business and culture and inclusion. So just a couple of ideas that are, that are out there in terms of what those goals might be. In terms of the guiding principles for how this would work, we have to understand that change is possible, it's going to take all of us, we're all going to have to work together, that we have to trust that each other, that we all want an anti-racist Chippewa Valley and that our shared goal and each person can contribute to it, that we would encourage creativity, welcome new ideas and build on strengths, and that we expect results. So for this next part of the work session, what I would be looking for from you and the other partners that are on this call today would be just your feedback on what I have up on the screen here and really, what are your thoughts on this concept of a regional task force? What are your thoughts on the sectors? Do you have any thoughts or feedback on the framework, the goals or the guiding principles? And very importantly, as we think about what this should look like, do you have particular people or institutions that you want to make sure are consulted as this is being formed? And then, of course, anything else that you'd like to add on the topic?
Any comments from council? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, lots of ideas in my head, but I'll start. I guess when you went to the sectors, how you broke them out, so one idea that popped in my head, again, I think, mental health, because that's my background, so I wonder where that would fit in, because I see that fitting into human and social services as well as healthcare and even personal services. So just, I don't need an answer now, but I wonder where that would fit, just that's what popped in my head.
Okay.
And then, let's see, okay. And just the overall, you know, I think this is a great idea. I really like the affordable housing task force, maybe because I was most involved with that, I saw how that worked, so, and I know what Lisca did with the public intoxication, because she ran that, right? Yeah. I feel like I kind of came in at the tail end of that, but that seemed to be really successful as well. But the affordable housing task force, I really liked how it was anchored in the planning departments of Altoona and Eau Claire, and yet I was just always impressed with their emails that all are welcome, here's the time, show up, there's coffee and bagels. It was very welcoming, just even the emails, here's the Google Drive, you know, add to it, take from it, just from the get-go, it was very open. And if we can mimic that as much as we can, and I guess that's a question, is where do you see this being anchored? You know, my thought would be the Health Department, actually, but I know they're dealing with this little virus thing going on, so...
Yeah, you said that little thing called COVID-19.
Yeah, they're strapped for time and resources, so that may not be the best. But that's another, I'm wondering where you see this anchored, because I think that helps to give it that structure and to make sure someone is leading it. Another thought is people do want to help, even today I got an email, they saw me on the news, I haven't seen it yet, but they said, oh, you're working to make Eau Claire like anti-racist or not, like, how can I help? And so I would love to give them, like, here, you know, here's, there's a group you can join. I just really like to empower people to show up because they do want to help. So, yeah, like how that would look like, I'm wondering as well. So those are kind of my thoughts right now.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Bergy? Councilmember Jean?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Manager Peters. This is, I'm really excited, this is really well thought out, and I have to echo with Councilmember Bergy that having this in the Health Department is quite beneficial. As we know, racism creates historical traumas and especially in discrimination, which also affects the health and the mental health of communities, the way how they look at, view community, community members and how they contribute back with these, with these historical traumas. It really hinders the success of our community and it also really hinders the welfare and the health care of our community. So I want to say thank you to Councilmember Bergy for bringing that up. And I'm, as I'm looking at this regional area task force, you know, I'm looking at it as... And as I'm looking at this regional area task force, you know, I'm looking at it as, I'm glad that you have various different sectors, because we want to be rounded overall when it comes to being able to dismantle some of the, you know, or being champions in anti-racism policies, that it has to reflect all sectors of our economy and our community. So I want to express my support, and I'm excited to doing whatever we need to do to move this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jean. Council Vice President Emanuel?
Thank you so much, and thank you to staff and to our community who have helped to put some good stuff around it. And I think, you know, as dire and as serious as working with the Police Department, I think this is certainly a broader issue that we have the responsibility to address, which is racism, that's been institutionalized in our personal lives and in our community. So I think this is very important work, and I think it's important for us to be taking the broad view of things. A couple of things that I want to share. The first is just to share very candidly, from my heart and from my mind, just what I've been thinking about of a community response, and what is our role, and what isn't our role. And there's a quote that has just been swirling in my head by a theorist named Audrey Lord, And she has a famous writing, and she talks about, "The master's tools will never dismantle the master's house." I'll say that again, "The master's tools will never dismantle the master's house." And what I understand from her, and how I take that, is that basically using the tools that we've always had in our tool belt to address, in this case systemic racism, it's not really going to work if we're using the same tools. And I'm sensitive in sharing that, and I don't say that to the spirits of this work or any of the efforts, because I fully anticipate this will go forward, and I want it to go forward. What I think is so different with all of this is that the whole world woke up at the same time to say, "We can't turn a blind eye to this anymore. This whole situation shows us, our whole world, to be addressing." And I think that we have to take that very seriously as an invitation to consider, how do we do this differently? So, I'm not a total radical in where I advocate to, you know, throw out everything, I like most of this, I think. And we have so much, so many arrows pointed in the right direction. What I would suggest, though, is to think about, before a framework, a full framework is composed, just to actually have kind of a pre-conversation with the community members who have been historically disenfranchised, to help them be the lead to set the table, to help empower them, to empower all of us on what should be on this agenda. I think a lot of these same things will be there, and I think it's going to be more effective in the long term if there's very, very early buy-in to say, "This group of people came together and helped determine the destiny of where our community's going." Frankly, a lot of our leaders in our community are Caucasian, they're not people of color, and most people in our community who have leadership positions are male. And so, there is unfortunately disadvantage of having a diverse viewpoint right from the get-go. So, my suggestion would be to figure out, how can we get people a little bit earlier to the table to help set this framework before it gets completely rolled out? The second thing I would share is, I think we should think very seriously about finding some type of funding to eliminate barriers for participation. I don't think everybody will need it, and if we can find a way to help support people if they need to pay for childcare, if they need, you know, money for gas, or if we offset by doing maybe a gift card to a grocery store for the expenses, I think that because of the wealth inequalities that often intersect with racist societies, it's going to be cost prohibitive for a lot of people to fully participate. So I think we ought to figure out what can we do about that. And the last is this concept of anti-racist work. I think for so long, our kind of flowery language has been around diversity and inclusion, and I certainly own that I have been a part of that. And I think it's really brave and necessary courageous work that we take head-on the idea of being anti-racist to work at that, myself included. One of the resources that's been really helpful to me is through the African-American History Museum at the Smithsonian. They have multiple examples of what the anti-racist society looks like. And so, I would just really encourage us to embrace that concept and embrace that invitation that somehow, at this point in time, the world has invited us to become anti-racist leaders.
Thank you, Council Vice President Emanuel.
Yes, if I could, thank you, Vice President Emanuel. Just a couple of comments or some feedback. Agree with particularly what you said in your first remarks, not that I didn't with the others, but that, you know, part of the reason for saying this needs to be community-owned, and maybe, you know, if I were to dive into that a little deeper, is absolutely with what you're saying, is that this needs to be structured in a way that the community, and particularly people who have been disenfranchised or don't have high levels of trust with their institutions, need to be very actively involved with this in order for it to be effective. So, it's been very intentional to say, again, this shouldn't be associated directly with any one of the, you know, current institutions or organizations. There is no formal structure yet, so, I mean, these are just some concepts or ideas, and we are having conversations, very intentional conversations, with individuals right now. They haven't been to form a group of people around it, but that's certainly something that I think could happen. And we've been very intentional to say, "These are the concepts, these are ideas, and we want to listen, and we want to do this differently," because, you know, quite frankly, the ways we've been doing it before, as I said earlier, I mean, we've had these conversations before, but how do we structure this so that it's different this time, and what does that need to be, and what does that need to look like? So, we are having those conversations, one-on-one with different community leaders, and by "leaders," some of those are formal and in positions, others are just people who are arising and showing themselves as leaders in the community around this conversation. So, we are being very intentional about, you know, understanding that this does need to look different, and being open to, you know, to what that should be. And I appreciate your feedback on the barriers, and the language and the phrasing, you know, with, you know, becoming anti-racism or anti-racist. Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you to City Manager Peters for putting this together. This, I think that we can all agree that the process, that this is sort of modeled after, that the results that we got from those have been really, really positive. And I think one of the big things, I believe one of the big reasons that we had such a positive result, at least out of the Housing Commission, is that, sorry, not the Housing Commission, but the Regional Task Force on Affordable Housing, is that that task force had voices of advocates and voices of people who are being directly impacted. I understand that, you know, you're not listing every single person you've talked to about this yet, or have on the list to talk to, but I really would hope that organizations that are out in the community advocating for change right now are represented and invited to participate, and people who are in our community and are experiencing racism every day. I think it's really important that those folks are at the table, and actually, I would really hope that those, that folks that sort of fit into that category have the opportunity to have, you know, one of the loudest voices at the table, and are able to direct, you know, direct to the process and direct to the goal-setting from the very beginning, like Councilmember Emanuel had mentioned. So, that would be my main expectation of this task force, other than the really great expectations that have already been laid out. At three organizations come to mind when I think about organizations that are advocating and working with people with direct experience, and that's Uniting Bridges, as well led by Dr. Dexworth Lawton, as well as the Eau Claire Justice League led by Jalen Carlson, and the local ACLU chapter, David Carlson is the organizer. And so, just a couple of ideas to put out there, I hope that if you haven't spoken to those folks yet, that they might be on the list, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton, and all three of those organizations are already engaged in the conversation, as well as others.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to everyone for this conversation, and I very much appreciate the tension that we are discussing regarding, you know, the desire to put in place effective practices that we've seen before, and the desire to honor the fact that this challenge is going to ask us to reconsider everything that we've ever known and listened, and discover new ways of working and new ways of being. One group that I wanted just to highlight and call out as we think about moving into this conversation together is youth. And we have many, I think it's at least 25% of students in the Eau Claire School District are students of color, and that is a group that I think would be, it would be really helpful to listen from and to work with and to seek their guidance as we move forward, and recognizing that that might take some specialized facilitation with people that have experience with working with youth. I think that could be very promising in terms of gaining additional perspective that often get overlooked in the adult world.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Greger?
Thank you, President Walden, thank you, Mr. Peters, for fleshing this out for us today, and I do want to acknowledge Councilmembers Beaton and Bergy, who I know they helped bring this idea up, this regional task force idea, modeled after some of the success we've had with regional task forces, and this work session for initiating this too. I guess, you know, I'm very supportive of this idea. I think, you know, I think the folks that I've heard from in the public are very, they do have a level of concern about, you know, making sure that, you know, any progress the City of Eau Claire has made over the years can translate itself regionally, but also just, you know, the idea that there's really a lot of things that we're learning about across the country and around the world, really, about public safety, and about, you know, finding new ways to support each other as a community that we can learn from. So, it's almost like there's this opportunity to engage, you know, with, you know, the world, because I think the whole world is watching and paying attention and doing what they can as well. And to Councilmember Anderson's point about youth, I was going to bring that up too, because it really is inspiring, you know, sometimes the clarity of vision and expectation that we're getting from our youth during this, you know, important, you know, movement. You know, I was able to attend, like, all of the marches and rallies and events, like Juneteenth and things like that, it's really an inspiring thing, and most of the emails I've gotten, you know, have been from youth, including people that are, you know, like quite a few teenagers, so I think, you know, there's ways to make sure that moves forward. I guess, you know, I do want to end with a question here, maybe for Mr. Peters. There was, a couple weeks ago, mention of a task force on transparency in policing, also could be something that Chief Rokus can answer, but I'm just kind of wondering how that, I understand that this to be a separate task force that's focused internally on our Eau Claire Police Department, but I want to make sure we have strong community engagement in that task force as well, so I just kind of wanted to see how these two fit together, and what the timeline is for the task force on transparency in policing.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Greger. So, the transparency in policing is something that both Chief Rokus and I are very committed to, and that was, you know, a concept very early on, as we were, you know, were committed to doing that, haven't quite flushed out what that looks like or how we would do it, but probably the way that is coming together now, is that would be part of the law enforcement work that would be part of this bigger task force. So, but really what we wanted to do is make sure that transparency gets called out as its own important component, and so, it didn't get lost or, you know, within the overall law enforcement conversation. So, whether that becomes kind of a subgroup of the law enforcement, or becomes its own group, I guess as we look at the formation of things, that still has yet to be solidified. But just know that we're committed to, and we've already started going down that path of being transparent with the information requests that we have and putting it out there. But we do want to make sure that coming out of either this broader task force, well, hopefully out of this broader task force, is some very clear pieces of recommendations and thoughts on transparency, and yes, it would involve very much the collection of input and ideas from, in particular, groups of individuals that have, again, otherwise been disenfranchised or have high levels of mistrust of the Police Department. Because we recognize that transparency is one of the tools to earn and gain that trust, and that, in having input from groups of people who have that mistrust now, in what that transparency, what information do you need to build trust with the Police Department, is the question. And so, we will, we would be very intentional about how we would collect that, that feedback, and it probably will be just a very discreet but identifiable component of the law enforcement piece of this larger task force concept.
Thank you, City Manager Peters. Thank you, Councilmember Greger. Councilmember Jean?
Thank you, Council President. And, you know, I really appreciate everything that my council colleagues had mentioned, and then, you know, City Manager Peters, we've talked about this quite a bit over the last few weeks, is in regards to putting this task force together, and how we are looking at dismantling institutional and systemic racism. I just want to also remind that, as we search for folks to sit on our task force, this regional task force, that we are intentional about including the people that will, and elevating the voices of the impacted communities, and not falling into that same area that we're trying to dismantle, and being really mindful of not tokenizing either. So I do want to bring that up, because we have had that conversation, so it does take an overall, you know, strategy in making sure that the voices that are at the table are being heard and are feeling like they matter, not just because they're there to represent something, but they're really there to move the initiative forward. So just want to, you know, throw that out there, as this continues to be a conversation, and I look forward to Eau Claire leading by example as a regional task force for the rest of the cities that are surrounding us, and may not have, you know, the capacity that we have in order to putting those efforts together.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bergy?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Council President. And thank you-
And thank you, Councilmember Jeong. I think you bring up a very good point. And actually that was, I had two points, and one of them was just to highlight that, you know, our largest minority group is, are among neighbors in Eau Claire and just to make sure that they're involved as well and reaching out to those groups, which I'm sure you have, yeah. City manager is nodding, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I just want to say too that, you know, over the last, well, couple months, and I have heard of our, our among neighbors getting targeted in public spaces because of the anti-Asian sentiments out there that's coming along with this COVID virus. So, and they, they are, what I'm hearing is they're not feeling really safe. And that's also very real for our community and I think needs to be addressed as well. And we can't tolerate that as a community, that, you know, everyone should feel safe to go to the grocery store and go to public spaces, no matter what we look like. So just want to highlight that. And then I appreciate Councilmember Emanuel's point and her quote from Audrey Lord, I think that's how you say her name. And yes, and I may, I should have verbalized that I agree, and even though I said that, you know, I think it should be anchored in, in institution, I just, it brings up a good point because I feel like it gives it stability, but at the same time, and I know too that we often look to our members in our community of, of people of color to do a lot of this work, but oftentimes they don't get paid for that work. And it's a lot of work, like as our city manager said, this is a heavy lift. So there's that balance of, you know, listening and allowing, inviting them to the table at the beginning, which I think is very important, but also that we all need to do the work to make it happen. And people should be getting paid for this work as well because this is a lot, a lot of work to be anti-racist and lead our community that way. So yeah, just those two. This is just a really great conversation. And I think it's important to be flexible as we move forward. We might start this and be like, ooh, that's not working. Let's, and that's where the listening comes in. And if someone's saying this is not working, to listen and, and pivot and, and respond in a way that can work, so, which I think we can do.
Thank you. The, you know, what I think you're, you're pointing out is that there has to be enough structure that it can produce results, but it also has to be flexible enough that it can be creative. So we're, we're very mindful of trying to find that, that correct place to land in what the structure looks like so it can do both.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which discussion?
Yeah, if, if I could, just before we move on to three, just thank you for all of that. And to the extent that we have, you know, organizations or individuals that we've either engaged or we've invited to engage, you know, if, if there are other people that are listening to this, you know, feel free to reach out to, to me or the city manager's office. And because we, we're, we're trying to get as many ideas as we can before we even put the structure in place. And then, of course, the structure, whatever that is, has to be very open and be listening, has to be very intentional about listening. So there's really two phases here of, of, of listening. So open invitation.
Sure.
Agenda Item Number Three then is the, just kind of that discussion of the status and role of citizen oversight and law enforcement operations. And that, it's come up in, in the first two already, so let me, we'll take a little bit of a, of a deeper dive into some of that. And maybe we won't be able to get to all of it, but try to answer some of the questions. So just in terms of Oversight Committee or Oversight of, of Law Enforcement, Wisconsin law, as was noted earlier, does provide citizen oversight of protective services. And it's called the Eau Claire Police and Fire Commission, or for all communities in the state of Wisconsin, it's a PFC or a Police and Fire Commission. It's a statutory oversight body. It has five citizen of, people that are named or appointed to it. It is, I think it's important to note that it is a, a function of the progressive era. Over 100 years ago, the concept of the Police and Fire Commissions were, were developed to take politics out of policing and to make policing a professional framework within the state of Wisconsin. And I don't know how unique it is to the state of Wisconsin, but I know not all states have, you know, Police and Fire Commissions, which are, have citizen oversight. Like I said, it's five citizen members. It's nonpartisan, nonpolitical. They have responsibility of the hiring, promotions and discipline of all sworn officers, both in the police department and the fire department. And in terms of the, the community or misconduct, charges of misconduct, most people don't necessarily know this, but charges of misconduct can be brought against any officer, including chiefs in the police or the fire department, by the chief themselves. So the chief can bring charges against, you know, officers. The city manager can bring charges, a citizen can bring charges, and members of the Police and Fire Commission themselves can bring charges of discipline, you know, towards, if, if there's inappropriate behavior within, within the department. So you have a very direct citizen oversight as it comes to, you know, the, the conduct of our protective service employees. As was mentioned before, the policies and day-to-day operations are the responsibility of the city manager and the chief. As professional managers, we are together accountable for keeping our policies current and fresh and, and relevant, and then also the training that goes with that. And the, and then in turn, the, the chief is responsible and accountable to me as the city manager and also to the Police and Fire Commission. And of course, as city manager, I'm accountable to you as the, as your sole employee for the, as, as the city council. The chief mentioned earlier Lexipol, and I, so I won't repeat all that, but just know that we have a professional service that does update the policies every six months, and they also have testing that goes with it. So you have policy from an operational perspective that is being developed at, at a national level that is being updated every six months, as well as, you know, the, the scope or the lens from, you know, the professional chief and the professional manager that are, are, again, accountable to the Police and Fire Commission and the city council. If there is a desire to have more citizen operational management of the protective services, there is a mechanism to do that. And in the state of Wisconsin, there's a statutory means of expanding or having what's known as optional powers for the Police and Fire Commission. And this would provide a broader scope for the, the Citizen Police and Fire Commission to, to, to be involved with the operational management of the department. There's only, I believe, two cities in the state of Wisconsin that currently do that, and it's called the Optional Powers. But it does have to happen by referendum in the community. So they would have to go through a referendum process to expand the authority of the, of the, of the Police and Fire Commission, essentially to have the operations be more by the citizen board than by the city manager and the, and the police chief. Other than that, as, as was pointed out, there was the, the memo that was written by the, by the city attorney, kind of talking about the council's role in regulation and tax levy and budgets. And there were some other specific questions related to that, which I said we would hold off till this point. And so Steve, I don't know if you want to try to address some of those earlier questions that were brought up by council on this issue?
Good afternoon, City Attorney Nick.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you, City Manager Peters, for that excellent introduction. I will, I'll try to provide a, a brief overview, but I think, again, Mr. Peters did an excellent job. And as I indicated at the end of my memo, while, you know, a seven-page memo is brief in the way that lawyers term things being a brief, it, it really can only scratch the surface of what is a substantial issue. I would certainly encourage you to look not only at, at that document as a reference, but as, as I cite to extensively, including using Figure One prominently in the beginning of the memo. It is from the Handbook for Wisconsin Police and Fire Commissions that the Wisconsin League of Municipalities puts out and updated just about a half a year ago. So it's, it's updated as of December 2019, and my memo draws from that substantially. But there's more information in there, setting out an overview not only of the commission's duty, but specifically a, a heading that starts on page seven of that document, how a commission fits into the organizational structure of municipalities and dealing with, with some of the issues that council members raised this evening, or I think are otherwise relevant in, in the community. Beyond that, as an attempt to, to try to further summarize a relatively brief answer to some of the, the very good questions asked this evening, again, referring back to my memo in terms of what is a role for city council, which as I note, in that memo, you know, a city council isn't shown in that Figure One. So when it, when it, when the league manual discusses how police or fire departments operate, the city council doesn't show up in there at all. But there is certainly a role statutorily for the city council. And as I note, it's, it's one of a legislative function. So items of legislative nature, certainly budget being at any level of government in the United States, a principal legislative function, but not the only one. So as I referenced in there, there's also matters of, of general legislative application that I couldn't hope to enumerate entirely, but provided you two examples, two recent examples that I think our current council members would relate to. But obviously, there could be any number of more that would really be best and necessary to review case by case. And the other one that's somewhat unique to us, but again, you know, statutory-based authority is in a council manager form, or as the statutes call it, a city manager plan form of government. There's that additional authority of input into who the executive is that doesn't exist for anyone other than the electorate in a mayoral council form of government. And then, I mean, basically, the, the structure of the memo shows how you can best try to understand what authorities are available to city council, if nothing else, by exclusion, right? You know, so what is left to try to understand and interpret that statutory provision that indicates other lawful orders, either by the mayor, for us, the manager, or city council? What does that mean? And while, you know, it's generally true in, in any kind of law that you can't list every possible thing you can do, it's, it often happens of frankly, you know, what you can't do, or where has it been assigned elsewhere? And so when you go through where else have those authorities been assigned, it informs what is remaining as potential legislative authority. And so you look at things, again, all referenced in the memo, but the statutory grant of authority to the chief of police to have command of the police force, and the manager to possess and exercise all executive and general administrative powers upon mayors and common councils, those both falling in to what Mr. Peters just referenced broadly and correctly as day-to-day operations and application of policy. Personnel being the next key one, with the Police and Fire Commission specifically under 6213 of state statutes, shall have the role to appoint chiefs, approve subordinates, hear matters of discipline and make quasi-judicial determinations on those disciplinary issues. And the, the direct quote, but again, something referenced by the city manager, but a direct quote from the memo and from one of the very few cases we have in 1930s, Wisconsin Supreme Court case, that quote, "The legislative's primary purpose in creating the PFC was to remove administration of police and fire from city politics." And again, you can tell from the date of that decision, that sort of, you know, takes a while usually for a case to kind of bubble up and for a Supreme Court to decide it. But basically, you're dealing with, you know, post sort of progressive era reforms that were about 100 years ago, and then you get a case from the, the 30s where a lot of those legislative reforms were then being challenged, both at the state level and also a number of landmark decisions in our U.S. Supreme Court. And then also unions. So under Chapter 111, and specifically the Municipal Employment Relations Act, or MERA, we have contractual obligations and also statutory obligations to negotiate and then develop. And we have a collective bargaining agreement with our unions over issues of wages, hours, and working conditions. So again, one of the ways to best understand what council can do in terms of lawful orders or other general legislative actions is not those above things. Those are statutorily assigned to other actors that share the, the oversight and operational responsibilities for, for fire and law enforcement or collectively protective service. But it certainly leaves awesome authority on the legislative side to establish an approved budget to start with, because that is the principal Article One legislative power that, that we understand, again, at all levels in the U.S., and approval of the city manager locally. And also matters, again, returning to that concept that I stated at the beginning of my remarks, and that's indicated in my memo, of general legislative application. So there certainly can be other policies, whether it be a reduction in a forfeiture amount that a police chief may have some commentary on, but ultimately is something for the city council to establish, or to establish new rules, new ordinances, remove those ordinances, because only those can be enforced. What else it, it could be, I'm not, you know, really able to identify this evening, but as, as one of the council members indicated aptly, is certainly something that, that can be addressed moving forward, whether one of these commissions or task forces looking at the issue would, would recommend those sort of changes, or if any council members have ordinances that they're interested in proposing.
Thank you, City Attorney Nick. Other questions or comments? Council, Councilmember Wirthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you, City Attorney Nick. I wanted to just follow up on that, and I appreciate the memo that you wrote and the presentation this evening. Two, two questions. The first is around this notion of the Police and Fire Commission's political makeup. And I remember it even has it right on our website. It talks about that not, that no, no Police and Fire Commission shall have representation from more than three people of the same political party. As far as I know, we're not following that recommendation or state law, or, you know, I don't entirely understand how we are following it, if we are. So that was, I think, one of my questions. The other one is the, you know, I was thinking about this issue of policy and just as an example, even though this isn't, you know, in our community, this isn't anymore, you know, of a need, but if, if, for example, we still had chokeholds as, you know, part of the police policy, and say, for example, our police chief and our city manager stood by that policy, would the council have the ability to say that, you know, we no longer wish to see chokeholds exercised in our police department? You know, could that, would that be, for example, a lawful order? Or would we have to pass, you know, some piece of legislation to accomplish that? I get that's just an example I'm using, but, but that was kind of my question is around the policy setting piece too.
Thank you for those good questions. Let me take them in reverse order if possible. So the, the lawful order issue, again, while I don't want to delve into specific examples, but yes, it would be, my opinion that the format any lawful order would have to take would be a piece of legislation. So there clearly is no executive authority for council in either format, either under PFC oversight or under optional powers. Both, they're either held by manager slash mayor, manager here, police chief, and PFC, or under optional powers, PFC, chief, and subordinates. But broad policy pieces would be implemented, including any way to, you know, impose or to direct through lawful order by legislation. So your resolutions or your ordinances. And so that would be the manner of it. The, again, the specifics get more interesting. The, again, the specifics get more interesting, you know, more difficult, and obviously, that is something that we'd have to try to work through specifically. I don't think we have any of those that are yet on the table, to my knowledge, in Wisconsin, but certainly, it's an active discussion among city attorneys around the state and the league. And I've reached out to my colleagues on that, who of course are being asked similar questions in many of their communities. I think at a minimum, and that's why I put that in the memo, is it needs to be of general application and legislative in nature. And those are somewhat, I mean, they're related terms. Basically, it means something other than this instance for this individual, right? So you can set a standard that says the speeding limit, the speed limit is, you know, 30 miles an hour on, you know, Rudolph Road, or something like that. That is a legislative function. It is a matter of general application and a policy issue within the city of Eau Claire, indicating, you know, whether, you know, a certain motorist should be stopped, or whether that motorist should be prosecuted, are executive functions, as one example. So I think it is possible to reach certain issues on a broader policy matter, but again, an issue to delve into for another day, I would suggest. In terms of appointments to the Police and Fire Commission, I think you have a couple pretty good outtakes and quotes, either from state statute or the directives and recommendations from the League manual and my memo. So the clear policy preference that has been referenced a few times this evening is included also in our appointments materials for the Police and Fire Commission, is that it be apolitical. And that is the gold standard, the expectation, and the, really, the reason for the Police and Fire Commission, as cited in that 1930s decision that I just provided you, and informs how we should interpret 6213, whether it's appointment authority or the roles and responsibilities of Police and Fire Commission. The, while that's the gold standard, and there had been different versions of state law that, I didn't get into all those sort of nuances, I was into enough of them already, but there had been a state law for a time, quite some, quite some years ago, decades ago, that indicated council members could not be appointed to Police and Fire Commission. That was later removed, and we have this language. So it doesn't necessarily mean that council members should be, or other, you know, political individuals should be appointed to the Police and Fire Commission, but there once was a specific prohibition, and that was removed. What we have is the specific prohibition is no more than, three of the five members should be from the same political party if they are, you know, partisan or have a declared party, which I would say most electors don't. We don't have to declare that, other than in our private ballots in Wisconsin. But it should inform us and inform council when it's exercising its appointment authority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Council Vice President Emmanuel.[843.62][843.62]89.06][S04] Thank you, Council President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Peters, for your, all the
work that you put in on the document. I had a smile when I was finished reading it, the verity of the document, knowing it was some changes, but it really was short and to the point, considering what a large topic it is. So thank you so much for that work. You've indicated, or as I understand you indicate, that part of this could be a larger conversation for another day. And I am really interested in that. I think that, from a community standpoint, I think that people expect that their council members are able to respond in conjunction with working with staff, with working with our city manager form of government, and with respect to our citizen-led Police and Fire Commission. And so I really could benefit from learning about specific examples, and maybe even a pathway for council to bring proposals that would pertain to, in this case, the police department, but knowing that it could also pertain to fire departments. I think it's been a little blurry on, you know, what is council's role, and council being a little bit removed because of Police and Fire Commission. And I understand and I appreciate that. And at the same time, here we are in this situation that's not going away. I think it would be really helpful if we could see maybe a flow chart or some type of visual aid to help council members and help the public understand how do changes occur, and what path, you know, kind of an if-then, you know, type of model, so that when changes need to be addressed, we can really help to eliminate the tangles, or stepping, inadvertent stepping on anybody's toes of just trying to be efficient in finding a solution and working within our form of government.
City Attorney Nick.
Yeah, thank you for that question and comment. And I was hoping we had our overhead camera, but I guess we don't have that functional.[986.23][986.23]89.12][S05] We can.
Can you put it on?
I'm sorry, we can't.
Oh.
Well, I don't know that we can, or we can prepare the cameras.
It just can't go up.
I got you. Yeah, and if it doesn't go out, it's only beneficial to three of you all members. Anyway, all of you have received, all of you have received my memo, and it sounds like we may post that, make it more broadly available. And again, there's a more full explanation, as I indicated in the League of Municipalities handbook, although I don't think they have that resource online. But it is an excellent reference to that very question, Vice President Emmanuel, where on the issue specifically of operating rules and regulations, you know, in that diagram, it indicates, you know, from the chief to departmental operations, and, you know, the line of authority is city manager to police and fire department, the chief, uniform personnel and department operations, with the Police and Fire Commission on the side with its appointment and promotion rules. So certainly understand that there is that broader community interest, and that an expectation to review these issues is there, as I think it's part of the reason why we're, why I wrote the memo and why we're talking today, is certainly that expectation, I think, also includes an expectation that we do it, you know, correctly and lawfully. And so there are ways to do that, and I've outlined, you know, some of those, and we can certainly discuss other possibilities, because again, there's no way you can outline all the possible things that might be legislative action. But it is frankly pretty clear from the League's review of it, that figure in my memo, that, you know, in terms of establishing operating rules and regulations, that that's a matter on the executive side for the chief with his staff, and is something that is not under PFC control either, absent optional powers. It very clearly is within optional powers. Then it adds words such as policy procedures, management terms such as that, that I think I give a direct quote to in my memo. But otherwise, it's at that chief level.
Thank you, City Attorney Nick. Councilmember Anderson.[1156.66][1156.66]89.12][S08] Thank you, Council President, and thank you for the conversation, and City Attorney
Nick, for your work kind of sketching this out for us. One question that I have is whether the Police and Fire Commission currently has a public comment period?
I do not believe it currently does. It is something that I know the Appointments Committee has been working on with the city manager, and maybe a new, again, in terms of legislative policies of general application, may become something that city council considers as an ordinance moving forward, that that would be a requirement. And it frankly may be advisable to make it a charter ordinance, since Police and Fire Commission is a statutory body. But I don't know if there's other comments. I mean, Mr. Peters used to be the liaison to the PFC, and so I think, you know, the practices differ somewhat between our different boards and commissions, but from my experience at Police and Fire Commission, among others, if members of the public are there, they are often recognized. But there is not a specific or formal public comment period at our, at the Police and Fire Commission as of now.[1246.83][1246.83]89.21][S08] Great, thank you.
I think moving forward, the more that we can communicate with the public about their avenues for providing oversight, or for communicating about any for change, the better. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Worthman.[1264.25][1264.25]89.32][S03] Thank you, Council President Weld.
I just wanted to add, you know, another part to this dialogue, which is the fact that, you know, ultimately, we're, you know, in terms of elected oversight, the city council is responsible for outcomes. And by that, you know, as I understand it, if, you know, for example, we don't like how things are going with the police department, say, this transparency committee finds that, you know, of all traffic stops, 50% are people of color in our community, and we say that's unacceptable, our avenue is with the city manager to say, you know, we would like a different outcome out of this. And I think, you know, to me, it's sort of, it's a difficult place to be in, because I'll give an example, but a few years ago, when the police department decided to buy the military vehicle, you know, in that case, funding was, you know, realized partway through the year, a decision was made that this vehicle was needed, and really, that probably, you know, would have been power of the purse, you know, decision. But ultimately, the city council's the one who gets all the phone calls, and, you know, then we have to respond, and it's not easy to explain to people why we don't have a say, or why we can't impact that policy. And so that's why, you know, I, you know, I'm learning a lot through this dialogue, but I think for the public, it's very confusing, because we don't have an elected mayor, and the people they elect are the city council, you know, that that really is their avenue to, you know, to seek change. You know, I guess I just want to kind of clarify that that is the case, and that, to me, it's, I don't want us to think, or to get into a space where we say, oh, well, the police department is doing X, and we can't do anything about it, because there isn't an elected recourse, sorry, recourse through election. I don't think that's where we want to go. So I guess that's my comment on this issue.
Right.
Any other comments or questions from council? I don't see any.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, City Attorney Nick. Mr. Peters.
Thank you. We have, we're zooming past our hour and a half, but there are two other topics that just we can touch on. One was the, just the update on the investment in body-worn cameras, and really, not much of a change from statements that I've made earlier, that we are exploring the feasibility of moving that from '22 and '23 up to year '21, and we're still collecting those numbers and the information. And so I'll have a better idea of that when we get to the, you know, the CIP adoption process. So unless there's any specific questions on that, I can move on to the last topic.
Councilmember Gregor.[1471.25][1471.25]89.32][S10] Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Peters.
Just to, I know that, you know, for the council's benefit, we received a copy of the Police CIP projects for the 2021 to 2025, basically pulling out the numbers from our draft CIP. Kind of a question about that related to body-worn cameras, because I understand it's embedded in the public safety video systems line item. And I noticed that the numbers are different. Is that just, so it's basically lower dollar amounts in '22 and '23? Is that because, you know, the part of that share is the, you know, part of the total dollar amount that was in the full CIP document, like partly covered by the sheriff's department? Or I guess if you could maybe clarify those numbers, or maybe Mr. Winsons could do that.
I believe that Mr. Winsa is on the phone, so let me see if he's still on the call, if he wants to address it, otherwise I can.
Good evening.[1571.12][1571.12]89.41][S11] Good evening, Council President.
Yes, the Councilmember Gregor is correct that I, what I pulled out of the CIP, what I indicated in that information provided to the city council, was the city's share of the, of that particular CIP project. And actually, for all of the CIP projects, I indicated what the city's share of those projects are. Many of those, we have partners, could be the county, could be Altoona, could be the state of Wisconsin, which are partners in some of those projects. But for, you know, to answer what the city's investment is, or what the city's cost in the CIP was, I omitted the funding that was being provided by those other jurisdictions.
All right, thank you. I do have a follow-up question.
Certainly.
I guess, in the scenario that maybe there's a staff initiated or changed before this comes to a vote ultimately, I'm not sure if that's the plan, or if it'd be an amendment on the, at the council level, but to like move funding to 2021 for body-worn cameras, or at least that portion of the public safety video systems, do you foresee that costing less money, about the same amount of money, or more money overall? Like if we're looking at the breadth of the CIP over the period of five years, do you see it saving us money to do it earlier, or do you see it kind of being about the same?
That is currently what we're evaluating. So we're getting numbers on that, so I really don't know the answer to that question. But, so that's part of this evaluation process, and if we do look at moving it forward, it would be part of, what I would be doing is revising the recommended budget to the CIP for your consideration, if we feel we can do that and shift things around.
All right, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from council? I don't see any.
Okay, then the last one was, I, I.
I'm, whoop. Councilmember Anderson, did you?[1733.54][1733.54]89.62][S08] Yeah, I just had a quick question, and perhaps this would be better discussed at
a budget, at a capital improvement meeting, but I'm just curious regarding the video systems. Does that include any, like, facial recognition technology?
No.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I do not see any more hands.
All right, then moving on to the last one, there'd been some conversation, and just want, some folks wanted an opportunity to discuss about the interest and support for adding personnel that would be dedicated to increasing diversity, inclusion in the organization. So just opening it up for your feedback and comments and questions on that. And, you know, it might be helpful in the conversation, because I know that that is certainly something that the council has been interested in, adding to our personnel mix, just recognizing that as conversation has been developing, going into the budget season. Just recognizing that as conversation has been developing going into the budget season, the body cameras, which we just talked about, are going to require more personnel to do the management of the records and the records requests and processing that. So there are personnel associated with the body camera proposal. And as Chief Rokas talked about, this idea of a co-response and where we go with a co-response. This idea that police officers would work in conjunction with other professionals when doing responses, and, you know, what does that look like? And that's likely a longer term plan. It's not something we're going to be able to pivot to, you know, in one budget year. But starting that pivot, you know, is certainly of interest to us from a staff perspective and what that looks like. We're still exploring, you know, the right model and the way we look at. But that's certainly a topic of interest in terms of budget thoughts going forward. So I know, you know, talking last year, there was interest in the diversity inclusion. But certainly, events that have happened in the last month or two have really brought forward perhaps other priorities and interests, particularly related to the body worn cameras, and figuring out where we go with, from a staffing perspective, on co-responses. So I'll just add to the complexity of the conversation you might have.
Council Vice President Emanuel?
Thank you so much, Council President. And thank you, Mr. Peters, just for opening up this door. I know I can picture you and me sitting at the back of council chambers, oh, probably about eight months ago, talking about this and how important this position is to, I feel, the City of Eau Claire's organization. In fact, I think this is more important than priorities and really the other things that we've been talking about because I believe this person could help come and evaluate the systemic changes that need to occur, looking at a holistic viewpoint of our organization versus one department at a time. My recommendation is that we work together to figure out what this is vigil, what their responsibilities would be. And I certainly respect and understand that that's in the manager's purview for creating these positions for a small department. And I think that this person, in addition to increasing diversity and inclusion, my comments earlier around anti-racist work would be really key in this type of role. I also think that, how do you set the essence? I think logistically, if we wait till the next budget cycle to adopt this, making things effective, January 1, by the time somebody would be hired, you know, could be March or April, that's, you know, a happy year away, more than that. And so I would really explore our organization to see if there's any inkling of salary savings where we could start to surge earlier, perhaps even having somebody onboard by the end of the year so that we can get a head start on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I'd also like to express support for this position and this idea. I think, like Councilmember Emanuel said, time is of the essence. And I do think that a position like this could help in the process of the regional task force as well. I think about, you know, all the good things that are going to be coming out of the task force, I hope, and, you know, how that's going to be managed, all of those new ideas and those new changes. I think that that could be a really good first charge for a diversity, this diversity person. I think too that, you know, we have, when I think about stepping back and looking at the city organization and institutions in our country and in our communities, they were built on a foundation of racism. And they inevitably, by no necessary fault of anybody here, they inevitably have policies that are inherently racist. That's just a truth that we all have to come to terms with. And I think that in the long term, we really need somebody who's designated to examine what those policies are and help us to break those down in order to truly be an anti-racist organization. I think too that we have a lot of community engagement gaps to fill, always gaps to fill. I think that that work is never over. But I think that we as an organization can do a lot better in engaging with the community and particularly people of color in our community. And I think that this position could do that too. So I wanted to express a strong support for this. And really, you know, I understand there's budget, there are budget issues in our community and communities across the state. But I really would ask the city manager to see if there's a way to do both, the diversity position and the body worn camera changes. I think that those two are both going to be priorities of mine in this budget process. And if there's a way that we can make it work, I'd love to, you know, be able to work with staff on that collaboratively. So, yep, just expecting my support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jean?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Peters. I just want to express my support for this. And I also wanted to highlight that, you know, and coming from a minority community, and speaking on behalf of the Mont community, just trying to elevate some of the support is that we've been anticipating and wanting the city to have an EDI person or someone who's solely focused on creating culturally competent trainings and building those competent relationships within our community. And as we look at that, as Eau Claire continues to grow, we have to acknowledge that we're only going to continue to diversify. And in order for us to continue to lead the efforts and lead by example, I think it's very important that we start within our own organizations leading the way for the rest of the community, on showing what that looks like of having a person to lead those work and embracing in those diversity and inclusion and really is per se walking our walk versus just talking talk. I'd like to bring that to light, that it's been a wanted position that the Mont community has been looking at and has been requesting for years. So I'm excited that we're having this conversation. And I'm sure there are many out there that are looking to see when we're going to follow through with our promise of having a liaison of some sort. So just want to share that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Emanuel, did you have another?
Thank you, I do. One of the things I wanted to also lift up is we have a guest already in our community, and that is participatory budgeting. That's already been budgeted. Participatory budgeting by nature is anti-racist work. And so I would just elevate that, you know, we have that strength that we can offer with our community right now. And as soon as this is ready to roll, which I know was going to be fired up mid-year already, I just think that we've got really good momentum around that that really aligns with everything we're talking about and something we've already been working on. Just want to lift that up and give my appreciation for everybody who helped to make that happen.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Peters, for your endless work that you have put yourself, you know, very strongly into here. And appreciate having us on our agenda. I think, you know, it's something I definitely support. You know, I look at our partners at the university and how throughout higher education across the country, how, you know, it does take staff and it does take, you know, staff that can work with the entire campus or city or whatever entity you're talking about to kind of, you know, since we have 500 employees, you know, we need, they need support, you know, from staff for potentially, you know, I kind of envision this as a director level position really because, you know, I see the position as really helping lead the organization internally, but also like in those partnerships. So I think as a city manager, Mr. Peters, you know exactly like how the, how both of those are important. But obviously, one person can't do everything. So just thinking about how collaborative it can be is really important here. And to Councilmember Emanuel's point, you know, there's issues like the budget or like new programs or ideas for engaging the public that really do need to make sure that they have a lens of inclusivity and making sure we're getting the ideas we need to make the best decisions. So just wanted to show my support for it. You know, I think the planning department could really benefit. I think our budget process, we've, you know, made some changes to our budget process the last few years. But we know that more change is needed to make sure more people are involved. And just kind of leveling the playing field for involvement is part of what I see this position. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I would just like to say what an outstanding conversation this has been this evening. But I'm going to go back to the idea of making this a regional task force. And in this COVID time, when financial conversations are going to be foremost for a lot of entities, that this particular conversation might be a great way to imagine how is the, how is the leadership going to be anchored? How is that cost going to be shared in creating an anti-racist community? I don't, although I am incredibly supportive of this, I came back from the League event last year having heard how successful this has been in transforming other communities across the state. But I think we can also imagine what are the other ideas from other institutions and other partners? How can we do this together? How can we have shared buy-in? It might actually be more successful in our community that the city does not lead this. But I'd like to just finish my comments by saying I'm very supportive of this. I think that all aspects of the city would be improved by it. But I also think that there might be some shared participation in creating that position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Jean?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Peters, I, you know, I wanted to share, I know that we are having the 2021 Toward One Conference that's coming to Eau Claire,
Yep.
which is their annual conference. And I, you know, I'm interested in seeing, and I agree that if we start earlier on and getting, you know, hopefully we could do that with your help and looking at our budget, so curious to wonder on how that person would be able to intentionally, in conjunction with the task force, how would you utilize the information that we could gather from our conference and really apply that to our city? Like this is work that I would think that it would need to take someone to do, and not just a task force, but someone that would be on it on a daily basis that would have a better grasp of how do we utilize these data to really help our community move forward as the leader of anti-racism? And then also being able to really embrace, you know, that diversity and how that looks like with our, with the work and with the events of the Toward One Conference coming in. So just want to share that, my thoughts on that. And working in conjunction with, of course, the city manager of, you know, how are we going to obtain the information from the 2021 Toward One Conference with the participants and, you know, having those data reflect our city too?
Thank you. I'm actually hopeful that the work of this task force or whatever we're going to end up calling it will actually be well along to the point where actually we can present what Eau Claire has done at the conference, and it can be a two-way street of sharing information and ideas.
Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to, I'll be brief, just say my support for this position as well. And I'd also like to highlight that even though race is obviously very important, there's also an intersection here. And this position would also include, you know, LGBTQ matters, gender, people of varying physical and intellectual abilities, religion and spirituality. So there's lots of different diverse, and we're just stronger when we're more diverse as well. So just want to lift that up as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments from council? I don't see any. Do you have any closing remarks?
No, just other than to say thank you very much for the feedback and the conversation. And, you know, it's challenging. I wish we were all in the same room, right, so we could look at each other. And but, you know, I appreciate everybody stepping up and providing your thoughts and your feedback on this. It's an ongoing conversation. I just want you to know that we are committed to engaging in the energy that's in the community. And even though it will be challenging and difficult work, even without COVID, the COVID layer is going to make it even that much more harder, right, to convene people and get ideas. But we're committed to working through that and really taking this conversation, this happening in the community and the energy in the community, and moving Eau Claire forward in some very real and meaningful ways.
Thank you, City Manager Peters. Thank you, City Attorney Nick and city staff. We appreciate all your time. To council members, I also would just like to state that obviously, it was a good conversation today, and there'll be many more conversations to come. A lot of hard work and a lot of time and dedicated people that hopefully will realize and live to see a lot of great successes from it. But I'm certain we'll get there, and I'm confident of that. With that, if there is no other comments from council, I will look forward to seeing all of you at our next work session on Thursday at 4:00 and then in our public hearing next Monday. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.